Welcome, everyone. I am calling the July 10th City Council Meeting to order. This meeting was rescheduled a week later than normal due to the Fourth of July holiday. As a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. First item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Our first next item this evening is special business, and this is ID 1504. We will be swearing in a new police commander this evening, and I'd like to invite Casey Allred and our Chief of Police to come to the lectern. And Chief, I wonder if I could get you to introduce Casey first.
Good evening, everybody, council members, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity this evening for us to introduce our new commander for the Police Department, Casey Allred. He's been with King County for the last 14 years, and we're very lucky and fortunate to have him with us. He started on July 5th, and he'll be with us hopefully for a long time. So I'll let Madam Mayor swear him in.
Casey, if you want to come and stand up and raise your hand. I state your name.
Casey Allred.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Commander of the City of Issaquah, Washington, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability, and that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Issaquah and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America. So help me God. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And Casey, if you'd like to come back to the microphone, maybe tell our council and our community a little bit about yourself? That'd be great.
I didn't really prepare anything, so this is awesome. I really look forward for this opportunity, right? I told when I came in through the interview process with Chief Shawan that there was a different atmosphere and a different feeling when I walked, immediately when I walked in through the door of the Issaquah Police Department. I could immediately feel it. And I came from King County, and it was just definitely a different feeling, right? It felt, I told her, I actually felt more like home. I was born, not born, I was raised in Bothell for most of my life, and so it reminded me a lot of home, right, and the community. And right before we were coming here, I was just standing there at our break room looking out the door, and there's this beautiful park that kids and the community and families playing at, and it just felt right. And so I look very forward to being here for a very long time and being able to create and build a great team and be a part of already a great team there at Issaquah. So thank you so much for this and this opportunity.
We're just going to take a couple-minute break from our meeting and do a few pictures. So, City Clerk, if that's okay, we'll take five minutes. Great. I'd love to get, Wally, are you our photographer tonight? I'd love to get some pictures of the chief with Casey and staff that's here, and then maybe. We're really excited. Okay, Paula, where would you like to do the pictures? Council, would you like to get a picture? We love pictures. Council, would you like to get a picture? We love pictures. Fans, we're back in our seats. We can get going. We're back, and the next item of business is ID 1469, the Independent Salary Commission findings, and I'd like to invite Salary Commission Chair John Traeger and Commission Member Victor Bello to make an informational presentation. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm John Traeger. I was the Commission Chair, also a former council member in the city and other roles. And I just wanted to introduce some of the members and say that it was a really good group. A lot of people on the Commission haven't done a lot yet in the city, but they will. It's fun to work with them and see people show their interest in how actually we do business, how the city actually works. So Victor Bello here will be doing the presentation, and online we have, well, over here in the audience, we have Linda Bailey, and online is Henry Farber, and not here, but also made your contribution from Jogo Denzuk. So it took a lot of their time to do it, a lot of them had business travel, and they still made all the meetings. It was a really good group, so. Here you go, Victor.
Thank you. Well, as John mentioned, a lot of time we've spent reviewing, since our first meeting in April, we started looking at all the data that the administration provided for us. Thank you so much. Couldn't have done it without them. And we, you know, reviewed all this data to determine what the right course of action would be, and we used comparable data from neighboring cities. In total, we're 12 cities that we looked at, from 22,000 to 153,000 residents, and we looked at their salary structures, stipends, benefits, and any other data to better inform our approach. And yeah, after weeks of discussions, we arrived at, next slide, please, we arrived at the following. We decided that an increase in salary was needed for council members from the current of $1,250 per month or $15,000 a year to a new salary of $1,700 a month or $20,400 a year, which would go into effect on August 1st. The stipends for both deputy council president and council president was unchanged, and it will continue to be $800 and $200 respectively, once the new salary is going to affect at the beginning of next month. The, next slide, please. Another thing we looked at was all the benefits that we were able to provide or that were being provided for the council. The benefits that were unchanged and still remain as part of our findings, which are not only from the 2015 Commission that preceded us, but before then even, was that the council members are still able to apply to the optional home internet stipend, the public employee retirement system as well, and that retirement program is also available for selected officials, which is again optional, but they're able to continue to apply for that. The reimbursement program under the council expenditure policy is available as well, which are, through our findings, we found that it's not very much used, but we encourage the council to use it more. And then we will continue to, the city will continue to provide the equipment as they do today with computers and phones for city business and software as needed. Next slide, please. Then we also looked at some new benefits through our process. We saw that one of our biggest points of conversation and discussion laid about removing deterrents or widening the pool of availability of citizens that wanted to participate but were not able to because of potentially, you know, economic reasons or other factors. So we looked very closely at that, and we looked at what other types of benefits we could provide to help us, quote-unquote, widen that pool of candidates or applicants to form service for the city. We saw that through that process, we arrived at the following benefits that would be provided, which one is life insurance policy, $50,000 policy that goes into effect on January 1st, 2024. We have the low-income stipend for council members that fall under the 80% area median income for King County, and wishes to apply for it, they will receive a stipend of $350 per month to help them in any way it can, also going into effect on January 1st, 2024. And then the optional enrollment into the CD 457 deferred compensation plan, which will match up to $200 per month, also going into effect on January 1st, 2024. Those are the new benefits that the Commission has found and applied for in our report. Next slide, please. Another consideration that we took seriously and something that we talked about widely since the beginning was a cost-of-levying adjustment. One of the aspects that was most discussed and debated about was, will this be a deterrent for council to call on the next commission, right? We have seen historically that it gets delayed. The 2015 Commission was 13 years after the previous one. Ours was eight years after. We, the biggest debate was, will the introduction of a COLA into the salary report now extend that to even longer? Which we'll discuss more in our considerations, but what we landed on was that we were going to provide this new benefit, and it will be tied to the same rate increase as the non-represented employees year to year, right? And the consideration is that it would be zero if the adopted CDY FTE count or full-time employee count falls below or matches 2.5%, right? If it's below 2.5% of this previous year, the COLA gets frozen for that year and doesn't have, doesn't get applied. And the effective date for this benefit would be January 1st, 2025. So we would have an increase in August 1st that would be the sole thing until the end of 2024, and then come 2021st, the COLA gets applied the same as the non-represented employees for the city, as long as FTE headcount doesn't fall under 2.5%. Then, next slide, please. Then, to do a recap of the effective dates of our findings, on August 1st, the increase comes into effect, as discussed earlier, for all council members. On January 1st, 2024, the new benefits come into play, the life insurance benefit, the optional stipend for low-income members as well, and the optional 457 match, also going to effect. And then a year later, in 2025, January 1st, 2025, the cost-of-levying adjustment gets applied alongside all the non-represented employees. And then, next slide, please. Now, during the course of our discussions, the Commission also touched up some topics that fell outside of their responsibilities under the IMC 290, and we, but we, even though we had conversations and we wanted to bring them as recommendations, the first one is for the city council to convene a salary commission every four years, specifically in odd-numbered years. This is to provide some relief to the pressure on the administration to support this commission alongside the biennial reports and other items that go into the even years, right? That's our first recommendation. And don't let, again, going back to the COLA, don't let that, you know, delay the formation because we still want the participation from the public and review, as it happened with our commission, to still have a, you know, a review of the salary for the council. Then the next recommendation is for an earlier formation date for the future commissions. We got called to order, our first meeting was in April, and it gave us ample time to review the data, but not to bring things into effect more in line with the rest of the administration's processes. So that would also be a good thing for managing as things go into effect, right? And then, lastly, the Commission recommends that the Equity Board's work plan includes a touchstone prior to convening the next independent salary commission, specifically as we were discussing through all of our findings and looking at all the data and talking about the low-income stipend, and how can we, again, widen the pool or bring more people underrepresented into serving our community. How has our work in this commission and our finding made an impact? So we want someone, the Equity Board in this case would be a good overseer in figuring out how that has been an impact, was it for the better, was it for the worse, and having that information provided for the next commission to also evaluate and take into consideration as they complete the work that we did as well. That concludes my portion, and Tina will provide some closing comments and more.
Tina Eggers, City Clerk, or sorry, not City Clerk, Chief of Staff, Staff Liaison to the Sisters City, or sorry, Sari Commission, I'm just all tongue-tied tonight. I do have to tell you that it was a great commission to work with. Again, it's an independent body who, decision goes into place, so they've given us a good report and good instructions, so I'm just really pleased with the group that we had. I can let you know that we did incredible outreach, despite the few numbers that you saw in our room or that provided a public comment. We did hold a public hearing. We do know that there was interest in observing our online information and that our touchpoints on our website were high, so I just want you to know that people were paying attention. There is a mechanism in place if the public feels differently about the decisions that the Commission made, and that certainly is going through a referendum petition process. And so the public has 30 days to go through that process, submit valid signatures, that deadline would be July 21st to file that with the City Clerk, and then it would go before the voters if the signatures were valid in November at the general election. The salary compensation package would freeze until a decision of, you know, until a vote was made by the people. I can tell you my 30 years as in local government, I've worked with two referendums in the past, so I would, they're rare, and I suspect that if it was something that was coming, we would have, we would have had more emails or outreach or public comments along the way. But just wanted again, say thank you, and we can, we're happy to answer questions.
Yes, well, Tina, thank you for your support, Tina of the Valerie Commission, excellent. And Victor, I can't really believe you haven't been up here doing this all along. That was fabulous. I personally am so excited that we were able to get members from our community that are not familiar faces to me, and I've been volunteering like John for over 30 years, so this is quite fun. Questions, Council, oh, Councilmember DeMichele, Councilmember Martz? Oh, do you have a question? Let's go with a question, and then I'll come back to you.
Thanks. What was the methodology that was used to arrive at this number?
The base salary?
Yeah, the $1,750 versus $1,250.
So we looked at all the cities in the region, and we looked at the hours that are, were from a survey that all of you actually did on the council, which it was the same, relatively, the survey results were relatively similar to last time. And then we just, so we looked at, you know, the size of the city, the type of city we are as a full-service city as opposed to smaller or contract cities, and so the scope of work and that kind of thing, and pulled all that together and took them up with a number that made sense relative to the amount of workload that's involved.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking is the last time we did this, we sort of had a philosophical idea, which is we wanted to be about a third from the bottom, right? We wanted to be below the mean for comp cities, and I'm just wondering if we had a philosophy like that in coming up with this number, because I've always felt, looking back at the last one, it was very easy for me to explain to the public. If somebody came to me and said, you know, "Why do we pay you what we pay you?", it's like, "No, no, 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 we're, you know, we're a bargain compared to a lot of our neighbors."
I think that's still true, actually. So from what we were looking at, it's mid-pack at best, and really depends on the type of city you look at and how big it is. Because of our near neighbors, they're a lot bigger, so like, you can't really compare Bellevue, for example. But that was our, not really a stated goal, but that was the result after looking at all the data.
Yeah, and we, another thing that we debated greatly was the salary amounts, especially when it came to the low-income stipends as well. How far do we reach? And we had an administration, the administration provided us some guidance in that effect when we looked at the comparable cities and the 12 cities and where we landed on, we were at the very bottom, like, very close to the bottom, if not the very bottom, when, before our, well, now, before August 1st, I would say. And the administration felt like we should aim for above the middle, maybe top five to, and that was before we implemented a COLA to say, "Okay, this will, you know, future-proof us for, you know, the next, possibly eight years till the next one gets called." But we, one thing that we decided to do was, every member looked at the numbers independently and brought their view in place. Everybody used their own methodology. I went with a very mathematical formula with all the numbers and came up with a number, and it was surprising that everybody came to the table very close, within a couple hundred dollars from each other, and then through discussions, we arrived to what you find there today, which puts us about the middle of the pack. And actually, we decided to lower, to not reach as far so that we could have more impact as well on the rest of the benefits as well, right? So it was a, it was a very balanced approach that we had.
Thank you so much. That's a really, that's a very helpful answer.
Councilmember Ray, will do questions.
Thanks. So what was the rationale for doing the compensation change in August and the rest of the benefit changes first and next year? I don't have a problem with it, I was just curious why you did that.
I'll take a stab at it, and then she can take a stab at me if I get it wrong. Because once the Commission has the findings, it is effective essentially immediately, and it just made sense on that timeline. But then the rest of it came in because of the benefit cycle for the city, so it was, we didn't want to create a hardship for implementation for the city staff. So that's why there's kind of the broken-out timeline.
That's great, thanks.
Any more questions? Any comments? Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you so much. Well, I just want you to know I'm thrilled with these recommendations, and I really want to focus in on the low-income stipend, because I thought I heard that we were one of the very few or the only one that you've been able to find that is actually offering this. So we are leading the way in our region in terms of offering this stipend. I very consciously did not watch deliberations except for the last deliberation, and I wanted to thank Jamie Longori, I believe is her name, who came and gave very moving testimony about what it means to her and her support for the low-income stipend, but also the support for the 80% AMI, which you very kindly adopted, so thank you so much. And Jamie is exactly the kind of resident we would want to encourage to run for council, and someone who shared her lived experience of wanting to run and having financial barriers to that dream. So hopefully, we are opening the doors to more people who have an interest in serving in the capacity of the city council, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking that on and for really excellent discussions and very thoughtful recommendations that you came back to us with. So thank you so much. Thanks to every Commissioner, thank you.
Any additional comments? And I will close this out by, again, just thanking you for the wonderful work that you did, those that are here in the room with us and those that may be watching, John, Victor, Jogo, Henry, and Linda. It was great to meet you all through this process and to watch you do your work. It was, it was a great job. And also, I couldn't not thank our former clerk, Chief of Staff, Tina Eggers, for her assistance and support to this salary commission. Thank you very much, Tina. So there is no action for the council this evening. Their decision stands, and there will be an ordinance, I believe. There's no ordinance, just a formal report. So thank you for taking the time to listen, and thank you for presenting. So the next item of business this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, please press star three, and if you joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There's also a public hearing tonight on AB 8454, the Street Standards Update, and so if you have comments on this item, you can make those under the public hearing, which will be occurring later on in our meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening? Mayor, I see we have one person in the room who would like to make comments. Great. So for those making comments, please direct them to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, do we have any virtual attendees today? Oh, we do, okay. If you are a virtual attendee and decide to speak, you will need to unmute your microphone. And if you're in person, please come up to the lectern, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and you want to provide some comments, but you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Resident comments written in verbal important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously, so we thank you for taking the time to address us. Do you have a listed name to call City Clerk? I don't have a listed name, but Steve Prera in the audience indicated a desire to speak. Steve, come on up.
And Steve, you will have to push the button on the base to get the microphone on.
Good evening, council. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here. I had three thoughts I wanted to share, my five-minute time limit, so I'll try to be fairly brisk. The first was, a couple weeks ago, the issue of the community meals came up. And I know it's still being worked. I just don't have the stats or the details to talk about it as far as the number of meals that are served and the number of people helped, the community value. I just thought about it in the context of remembering, it used to go through drive-in, which I used to do more often, drive-through. I remember five-dollar meals. If you valued that out, what's the cost of the benefit? I'd like to really see that program opportunity be able to be continued, continued. So that's my thoughts on that. Just wanted to share that. Next thought was on the consent calendar, the item for the Isaguas Chamber of Commerce Commerce lease. I did a brief checking in the anthology apartments, a one-bedroom apartment costs $2,035, $2,035, $2,035 a month. I know with this contract renewal, there was a previous clause that says, in the next 20-year period, there's $1 per year. There seems to be some incongruence between the cost of the benefit for renting an apartment and the cost of the value of the place that Isaguas Chamber of Commerce is getting. So I would also like to see contract, contract language removed that talks about, in consideration of the value that the Isaguas Chamber of Commerce adds. I'd like to see that struck from the commendation. I know there's a number of buildings, facilities that the city leases to various communities. If there's going to be a standard policy for what those benefits and what those benefits should be considered, for all those that should be considered within policy, not within the language of a contract. So I would like to see that brought down, discussed more in the consent calendar. Third item, did have to, and this is the one I wanted to kind of talk face-to-face, as it does talk about the issue that what I feel each of you deserve and should be paid for the role. So I want to have that kind of face-to-face, to kind of show the respect. I do have a strong respect for people who decide to serve in the role that you've stood up for. I would structure it a little bit differently. I would say $325 stipend per month, per week, which comes out to $1,690, which is in line with, with what the commission recommended. Just from my standpoint, you and the mayor's office work for the city, but you face the voters and the people that you represent. And I think it's a little bit egregious for the administratively handle the salary increases at 3% at the same rate. So I would like to see that issue struck from the bond. And I'm not prepared to go submit a petition and go gather signatures to have that done. But I just wanted to share that that's not from a lack of respect from your efforts or your contributions, but it's the fact that I believe each of you face people and people through a salary commission that have that bond and capability. I think the various boards and commissions, which I think are almost the crowning jewel of the public service of government, are offered a stipend of $50 per meeting. It keeps the same situation as a stipend for you. I know it's hard to get a document from the city and have hundreds or hundreds of pages that you have to read through and see how that relates to tax policy, how that relates to zoning, how that relates to our quality. There's a lot of things you have to take into account and consideration. I agree, sometimes I would maybe cast my vote differently if I were in your shoes. I'm not trying to make this political, but I know there's a lot that goes into it. Thanks for your consideration, your efforts. The only, the big thing I have though with heartburn is the 3% annual cost of living salary increase. That should be determination of the people. I agree with the recommendation of the, of this commission that looked at the salaries that should be looked at, maybe every four years on the annual years. I have no problem with that and have regular basis, but it's the will of the people that should be represented and carried forward. Just back, one other thought, on the various boards, commission, I think are the shining example. I know I started out on the library board and that kind of gave me the voice to find my place, to keep coming back, keeping back and asking you for things that I think should be considered. So my thanks to all the board and commission members and for their efforts and for their willingness to take the next step and keep speaking. Thank you.
City clerk, is there anyone else indicating a desire to speak?
No.
Well, thanks. We did hear from one member of the public this evening on the meals program, the Chamber of Commerce lease, and the salary commission recommendation on cost of living. Thank you for sharing that with us. Anyone can also send written comments in at any time to the city council at citycouncil@isquawwa.gov. The next item of business on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. And I have a couple of comments. AB 622, the Central Isqua multimodal I-90 crossing project. Tonight's consent calendar includes an action from the Public Works Department to initiate a planning study many of us have eagerly awaited, the Central Isqua multimodal I-90 crossing project. Boy, our names are long. AB 8622. This planning study will evaluate options and determine the preferred location for a new roadway with bike lanes and sidewalks to cross I-90. A new roadway crossing will improve mobility by providing a new connection between the northern and southern halves of Isqua's regional growth center. City staff will be coordinating this project with sound transit as it is vital to supporting our future light rail station. The planning study will take two years, and there will be many opportunities for the public to be involved in the process. I encourage everyone to keep an eye out for this project's coming-soon website and to stay connected. I also want to give an opportunity for any committee chairs, if there are items on the consent calendar that you need to provide some comments on. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On consent this evening, there is ID 1435, which is an informational update on capital project communication. This is a follow-up to an item that was reviewed by the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee on March 28th of this year. And in this follow-up, there's examples of the city's communication on its own city capital projects, with examples of signage and communication materials and videos that have been shared on social media for various projects around town. And this was a follow-up to the committee's work and then council's adoption of, of how we communicate, especially for private projects. And so we, we wanted to make sure that we were also reviewing what the city did for its own projects. And this item gives us information about that.
Any other committee chairs need to share any information before we move to consent calendar? I'm not seeing anybody. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion? Go ahead, council president.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. The motion before the council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven to no. The next item on our agenda this evening is the public hearing, AB 8454, the street standards update. And we will be just doing the hearing this evening. I'd like to invite Transportation Engineering Manager John Mortensen to make a presentation. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Mayor Polly. Give me just a minute, I'll get my presentation loaded up.
You can do that.
My name is John Mortensen, Transportation Engineering Manager. I have a brief presentation for you about the street standards update. The purpose of tonight's item is to conduct a public hearing to collect testimony on the proposed revisions to the public works street standards. Little background, the street standards were originally adopted in 2010. When the council at the time adopted them, there were two types of changes. There were changes that could be made administratively and changes that would require council action. Since then, a lot of stuff has happened. The Central Isqua circulation standards were adopted as part of the Central Isqua Plan. We recently completed the Mobility Master Plan. The giant overhaul of Title 18 was recently completed. And we've been working on some street typologies with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to help implement the Mobility Master Plan. As I mentioned before, some changes can be made administratively as long as they are consistent with the Wash Dot Design Manual, the Isqua Municipal Code for Landscaping and Tree Preservation, and the Isqua Comprehensive Plan. All other changes need to go before the city council. Some examples of that would be if we wanted to change the design criteria for a retaining wall, or if we wanted to change the typical sections, like what we're doing with the street typologies. And if we wanted to make exemptions to the landscaping requirement, those would all require council action. The proposal for the proposed revisions to the street standards includes taking items that are from Title 18, or that were originally in the old Title 18 that were orphaned when the new Title 18 was adopted. Those include the Central Isqua circulation facilities, which we also modified with the street typologies, sky bridges, which came in, we moved straight over. The street typologies, which are new street typical sections to implement the Mobility Master Plan. The traffic signal detection, we were making a change to go away from loop detectors to radar detectors. This is something that's, we've been doing as a way to preserve our pavement, but it also came out of the ITS plan that we've been working on, raising the bicycle level of traffic stress requirement to meet what's in the Mobility Master Plan and some minor cleanup. The item was presented to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. Earlier this year, we had an in-depth discussion on the type, street typologies, and that has been incorporated into this update. We also had a more general discussion with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to go over all the changes. And the committee was supportive of the changes, and most of the changes are housekeeping. The recommendation, the administration recommends approval of the proposed ordinance adopting the street standards as presented. Timing and next steps, tonight, we are conducting a public hearing on, with anticipated council adoption on July 24th. We're currently working on an update to the street standards to update our traffic signal standards with as much technology as goes into traffic signals. Those are a lot more out-of-date, and there's a lot of more work than we could put into this update. So we're currently working on that. In 2024 and beyond, things that we are working on for the street standards or will be working on are standards for bicycles at intersections. One of the things when we talk to the Transportation Advisory Board about the street typologies is, yeah, this is great, but what about when you get to the intersection? So that's something we're going to be working on. Illumination standards to better coordinate with the outdoor lighting code in the revised Title 18. And looking at ways to implement non-motorized projects and ways that we could come up with new standards or revise current standards. And that is my presentation.
Thanks, John. I'm looking for any council questions, and then I'll move on to committee chair Ray. Or do you want to do it in reverse order?
I'll, let's do questions first, then I'll give an update.
Questions? Council president?
Thank you. As I look around at cities, neighboring cities, you can tell certain cities have more of a preference for roundabouts versus streetlights, and others seem to prefer streetlights. Is there any change in how we approach that and how we talk about what the different methodology might be for choosing one versus the other?
The current proposed revisions to the street standards do not address whether we would go with a roundabout or a traffic signal.
Did you want to follow up, or are you fine? Just wondering if, you were wondering if it just went that far?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there a better time to talk about that? Or did it just not come up? Is there, how, where do we stand maybe on that spectrum?
I'll go with the easy one first. The reason why we didn't do it is the priority really was incorporating the street typology and the items orphaned from Title 18, that we really wanted to get that done. And so we prioritized it, knowing that the street standards are going to be something that we want to update annually. And as for priority between roundabouts and traffic signals, currently, we do not have a policy that says we prefer roundabouts or we prefer traffic signals. We look at it more on a case-by-case basis. If the council desired to have us put together a policy, that's something that we could look into, though.
Okay, thank you.
Just curious, are you on the pro roundabout or the anti-roundabout train?
I'm on the pro roundabout train as long as we can make it pedestrian safe. I think it slows down traffic, it provides local access, which we've talked a lot about, which I think is important. But I also, I also want to have standards and something that helps us make effective decisions and understand why one might be better than the other in different areas.
Were there additional questions? I will move to committee chair Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. So the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee received an update from staff at our June 13th meeting relative to street standards. We considered all the proposed revisions in the street standards and were supportive of sending those street standards to the city council tonight without revisions. So they're here tonight for a public hearing. And then if we, per the schedule, we would have them back for adoption on July 24th.
Thank you, committee chair. At this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:47. And again, if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
No.
If there's no objection, I will close the public hearing. The public hearing will be closed. Oh, oh, got an objection. There we go. Come on up.
I apologize.
So Linda, I'm going to get you to push that button on the base, which will turn a red light on, on the microphone. And if you could just start with your name and address.
I'm Linda Bailey. I live at 275 East Sunset Way. And on my street, there's two things that's happening that put a lot of us in danger. Pedestrians trying to cross East Sunset Way when we have huge semi-trucks coming down at us. Trucks aren't supposed to be in the city. They're cutting through from Isqua Hobart to 90. And as they're leaving Second Avenue, they're grabbing gears. By the time they get to that crosswalk that I might be standing in, they can't stop. I've run into it once by myself, but once was enough, because my dog was in front of me. It's worse coming down the hill, where on Thursday around 10:30, we heard a jake break. That was fun. None of us could talk on the phone. I'm in a tall building and all my neighbors were like, what the heck was that? A trucker coming down 90, couldn't stop it at Second fast enough and used the jake brake. I didn't even know what that was, but you know it when you hear it. My concern is not just pedestrians and what's happening with these trucks, is that the bicyclists coming off the rainier trail and trying to come up Second, or I'm sorry, Sunset, to get to the next trail that's around 90 where the cutover is, they are, there's no, it's all rocks on the side, so they literally have about this much space between the white line, a semi-truck, and gravel. We need a bike plan. So I heard you mention bikes, and that's why I thought, I'm going to step up, because I've been, I've been sending my complaints through the right place for the trucks, because I don't like the trucks. But when we talk about bicycles, it's a main route for them. I'm not a long-distance cyclist, but you see these guys. I'm not a long distance cyclist, but you see these guys coming and gals coming up East Sunset. They're already struggling with, there is an incline there. If you walk it, it's an incline, trust me. But they're trying to get up to that path, and there's no room for them. It's really scary to see that. And then when we've got the trucks in play in there, well, you know how I feel about that. So thank you for your time.
Linda, thank you for taking the time. Glad you're here tonight. Anyone else to speak? No, we have one member of the public online, but they're not indicating a desire to speak. Okay. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, Linda. Then I would be, if there is no objection, I will look to close the public hearing at There is no action requested on the street standards tonight. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee recommended this item returned to the city council for adoption at the July 24th meeting on the consent calendar. So the next item of business would be regular business. There are no regular items this evening, and so we'll move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with council member Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cascade Water Alliance has a finance committee meeting on July 18th and a special extended Cascade Board meeting on the 26th of July. And I want to thank council member Ray for agreeing to go to the extended Cascade Water Alliance meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council member De Michelle?
Mayor Pauli, I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Council member Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Coconee Interlocal Management Agreement Committee met on July 7th. We were presented with information on the Coconee returns, which were unfortunately not as good as the prior year and which were concerning. So Coconee are not out of the woods. These are our salmon in Lake Smamish that actually don't go out to the ocean. They live their whole life cycle in Lake Smamish and then the surrounding creeks, and so their conservation is very important. And the staff of this group are recommending a relatively modest increase in the contract as well as a $20,000 buffer to potentially cover additional costs that come up over the next year. And then they would use that as a carry forward if it wasn't used. So the difference in the approved budget for 2024 versus what was already previously approved by the ILA was is $7,000 for Issaquah's portion, which, you know, in our conversation in this committee is it's very important that we conserve these salmon, and I would strongly recommend that we go with the staff's recommendation. The recommendation will allow continuation of a captive brood stock effort that the technical team feels is important and helps keep the population numbers up. And so a number of us on the committee said that we would take this recommendation to our councils, and if there's no objection, then we will respond back to the ILA staff that we will we confirm, we would confirm the staff's recommendation to do this increase. So if there are no objections, and if you do have an objection, then please let me know at good of the order. But if there are no objections from my fellow council members, then I will be confirming that budget adjustment. So this committee only meets like a few times a year or as needed, and there's no additional meeting set at this time for the Coconee Interlocal Management Agreement Group. There will be a Coconee Working Group meeting, which is the technical group, and I will be able to present our our discussion and our recommendation to that group. Additionally, there will be a meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council of Raya Eight, which is our watershed, on July 20th, and there will be no August meeting of the Planning, Development and Environment Committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council member Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is meeting tomorrow at 6:30 here in chambers. We have a an item on the agenda. It's ID 1444, the Metro Flex On Demand Services. It ought to be a fascinating discussion. We're looking forward to it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting onsite, not remote. We do that quarterly, this Wednesday, July 12th at 7:00 PM in City Hall. And on the agenda, there's no action items, but there's a bunch of sort of roundtable information sharing, salary setting processes for cities. We're going to be sort of sharing timely conversation. Affordable Housing Committee Charter Review. At PIC, members will be asked for input to support the ongoing work by SCA representatives serving on the Affordable Housing Commission, have the opportunity to share efforts underway in their communities to address the affordable housing crisis. And then the third sort of roundtable conversation is Regional Emergency Management Coordination, asking basically how it's done, what emergency management topics would you find useful, has your jurisdiction sought state or federal disaster assistance, et cetera. And on all these topics, I've gotten input from the administration to support the conversation. Then, so that's PIC. Then Council Services, Safety and Parks will be meeting on Tuesday, July 18th at 6:30 PM here in council. It is a follow up discussion regarding broadband internet and the role in the city of basically communicating policy and things that community folks can do to optimize their internet access. This concludes.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Very brief one. The next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is this Thursday at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way. Most noteworthy on our agenda is a review of our new contract for fire services with the city of Mercer Island. So if you have any questions about that, please let us know. We have not heard back yet about our response to the RFP from Duval Fire District, so that's still in the works. But after this Thursday, our next board meeting won't be until September. We're taking a little summer break for the month of August. That concludes my report.
Council president?
The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on July 6th pretty short. We received a presentation from the Department of Commerce on their middle housing grant, and the next meeting is scheduled for August 3rd. No agenda released at this time. And then I also wanted to mention that last week, deputy council president Hall, city administrator Bob Quetz, and I met with the Issaquah School District Superintendent and the school board leadership, as we do quarterly. They asked for a little bit of information on our comprehensive plan planning, and we also had staff there from the Community Development Group to talk about growth projections, what that might mean for school facilities. They're still trying to figure out what their growth projections are, given what we have seen in recent years with some declines in enrollment. And then we also mentioned and brought up what we had heard from the Arts Commission members and other members of the community who are looking to use school facilities by the community use. And one of the things they did mention to us was they're having trouble getting a staff person on hand to run their theater. And so that is one of the reasons why they're having issues. But we're going to continue working through that and then also be able to message out to the community about what that issue is and who they should talk to if they do want to use one of those facilities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is the mayor's report. Starting up top, the executive session that was initially scheduled for tonight's meeting has been rescheduled to the July 24th city council meeting. The sister, the cities, Sister Cities Commission is working on travel details for a small delegation to travel to Morocco this year. Approximate travel dates are September 10th through 20th, 2023. Travel to Sundal, Norway is anticipated in 2024. I'm very excited to be part of fostering these important relationships, renewing arts and culture, and exploring other partnerships. Learn more about these efforts, please contact myself or my chief of staff, Tina Eggers, who is the staff liaison to the Sister Cities Commission. Earlier this evening, I issued a proclamation declaring July 2023 to be Parks and Community Services Month, and again, I want to thank the Parks and Community Services Department for their services and outstanding contributions. There's a few upcoming events. Concerts on the Green will be starting tomorrow night, and every summer, the Concerts on the Green present free, family-friendly, family-friendly concerts in a beautiful outdoor setting on the Issaquah Community Center Green. The series starts tomorrow and continues through the last Tuesday in August, and concerts run from 7:00 to 8:30. Spectators often start gathering as early as 6:00 PM for the community picnicking. And there is a restoration work party at the at the high school trail. So join the Issaquah Alps Trails Club and Green Issaquah by restoring the high school trail, a well-loved section of Tiger Mountain. On July 15th at 9:00 AM, we will be removing ivy, holly, and blackberry bushes. And for more information, please visit www.issaquahwa.gov because registration is required. And that's it for the mayor's report. We're going to move into good of the order, and maybe the first item we can do is the 2024-2029 Capitol Improvement Plan Council President Letter. Council president?
Thank you. We discussed this. It was in the agenda. I wasn't going to read the entire two-page document. But basically, what I tried to highlight in the letter, which I have to give a shout out to Suzy Moncel, our budget manager, for doing a great job of working with me on that and, you know, providing a lot of the concepts there. But deputy council president Hall and I talked about a few things that we wanted to highlight. First and foremost was just the process changes from this year versus last year, the criteria that we talked about. Second was the incredible feedback from the boards and commissions, wanting to make sure that we highlighted how important that was of a change this year, but also that they had feedback talking specifically about what the review cycle looks like next time and whether or not there are any components of that criteria, particularly there were some around equity that they wanted to make sure that we looked back on. So that is memorialized in that letter. We also talked about how committees were very useful. This was our first time moving from study sessions, but we still wanted also to be able to have a conversation about the mix, excuse me, the mix of projects. We also talked a little bit more about our feedback on potential revenue options such as a TBD sales tax and how everything that's presented in here is a possibility that the plan is based on, this is not a budget, there are no decisions made on that. And then finally, we mentioned that we did a little bit of tours of three locations for the CIP and that that helped us get into some of the details for projects. So that is what is highlighted in the council president letter. I don't think we need any approval of that, so unless there are any objections, that is going to be added. Yeah, any questions or comments? Okay. I have a few other things.
Yep, I was going to move into city council travel authorization. Also back to you.
Yes. Yeah, so this year's National League of Cities Annual Conference, the city summit, is scheduled November 15th to 18th in Atlanta, Georgia. Registration and travel costs are estimated at $2,500 per the council policy, resolution number 2008-15. Council action is sought because it goes over a certain dollar value. And so this this year for the NLC, we have interest in attending from deputy council president Hall, council member Hunt, and council member De Michelle. So I am bringing this up at good of the order. If there are no objections, we are going to just mark this as approved so that the administration can purchase those tickets and make progress. Any objections? Okay, fantastic. I have a few more.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just a few more. Next week, before the council meeting, I want to make sure everybody knows that we have a dinner with the senior leadership team and this year's Hall of Fame recipient. That is before the council meeting, I believe, over at Veterans Memorial Park that we're going to set up an area over there. So I want to make sure everybody, two weeks? Two weeks. Don't show up next week.
It's with the council meeting.
Yes, with the council meeting. Thank you. And then the Summer Employee Recognition Event is being held on July 20th. We are invited. I emailed just a reminder that if you are going to attend and potentially want any of the famous ribs, you need to RSVP by, I believe, tomorrow. So make sure to get your names on there for all of that. And then deputy council president, you wanted to talk about board and commissions.
Just a reminder, we're going around thinking boards and commissions, so if you'd like to participate, I just bumped the email back up to the top of your inboxes with opportunities for this month. Also, just to add up that there are two boards and commissions, I believe the Park Board and might be the Arts Commission, that just will never work with our schedule for council meetings. So the council president and I are going to draft a letter from the council thanking them for their hard work, and we'll send that around in case anyone has any thoughts or suggestions about that. Also, by the end of the summer, if we haven't gotten through all of the other boards and commissions, we'll be sure to write letters behalf to them too, so they know how much we appreciate them. But again, opportunities for this month are at the top of your inbox.
That's great. Are there any other good of the order items? I have just one. I wanted to thank council for coming and participating at that Blackberry Park celebration. You know, we haven't really been able to celebrate outside for projects in quite a while, so that was really great. Thank you for doing that. We have some upcoming council meetings. Monday, July 17th is the Committee of the Whole, and the anticipated items include transportation benefit district funding options. And again, due to the Fourth of July holiday, the July city council meetings are scheduled one week later than normal. So the second council meeting in July will occur on July 24th. The July 24th meeting will be preceded by dinner and a social gathering outdoors behind City Hall, bordering Veterans Memorial Field. The city council will be joined by the city's Hall of Fame recipients and city leadership team. For the regular meeting, the anticipated agenda items include the 2024 budget priorities, transportation and police. I think that's all the items that I have. Their executive session that was initially scheduled for tonight's meeting has been rescheduled to the July 24th city council meeting, and there being no further business, we are adjourned at five o'clock somewhere, 8:06 PM.